So, let's go ahead with roll call, please, Allison, and let's start the meeting.
Chair Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Benavides.
Here.
Trustee Foyt.
Here.
Trustee Wa.
Present.
Trustee Ortiz. Trustee Melendez. Trustee Remaker.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Turner Watley.
Here.
You do have a quorum, and if trustee Ortiz or trustee Melendez, I'll let you know when they come in.
Thank you very much. So, September ninth, Las Vegas Clark County District, trustees meeting, let's please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Trustee, public comment, do we have anybody signed up for public comment at this time, Allison? Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And is approved. To item four, the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, comments on the minutes?
Move to approve the minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are approved. On to the chair's report real quick. Item five A. We've got our proposed dates and locations for calendar year. Anybody have any input, any problem, any questions, any concerns with this schedule at this time?
Trustee Chair Wilson, I believe somebody just joined us, is this trustee Melendez on the phone?
Yes, it is.
We note you are here for the record, sir, thank you.
Jose?
Hello, everybody.
And that's it for the minutes. Having issues today with. Does anybody have any questions on the meeting dates? Issues, anything like that we need to be aware of?
I'll move to.
There's no action even required on this item, we're just making sure that there was any conflicts, we could just get them adjusted now, so we're good. Very quickly, just bullets the chair's report, before we move on to the library reports and the other action items. Did make a change trying this meeting to do as a consent agenda. For anyone who's not familiar with that here, to the point of the consent agenda, everyone will be given an opportunity, if there's any specifically discussed and voted out separately than consent, will have a chance at that time to pull it out. Please do not feel like you have to go along to get along, if there's an item in there you want to take out, vote on separately, discuss separately. Speak up, don't be shy, let us know. The whole point of a consent agenda is for regular business that burn over again repeatedly, that we just doesn't need to take up time one at a time going through. Especially for new board members, if you see something that's going to be your first time seeing it, that you want more attention to and want to discuss, please speak up, don't like we're trying to steamroll it by you. Real clear that consent doesn't mean that we're just going to jump over it. It's really it for me. Let's take a look and go on to item six, library reports. Start off with our executive director report.
Chair Wilson and board of trustees members. So, you've already had my report, my written report, so I won't go over it in depth, just wanted to highlight a few for. In port, so from July 30th on, to mention that I was selected from steering committee, steering committee is a nationwide. Starting reopen archives, libraries, and museums, it's a research project conducted by OCLC and Institute of Museum and Library Services and Batel. To produce and distribute science-based COVID-19 information. Decision-making regarding our operations, so the operations of archives, libraries, and museums, the steering committee started in 2020, so I will be participating. This will actually help a lot of ways, because I'll actually have some information to bring back and share with the district. And our employees around some of the science in being done around COVID-19 and regards to libraries. One of the other things that I've been doing is participating in library interviews. So, I participated in the regional manager interviews that we recently had, where we were able to hire two candidates, and I know we had planned for three, but we hired two candidates, one internal and one external. I will be also participating in some ongoing branch manager interviews that will start actually tomorrow. So, I'll be, I've got three days of interviews, so I'll be a part of the process, this is actually helping me learn more about our processes, as well as having candidates interact with the executive director. Another thing that I wanted to highlight, that I'm happy to present, I'm happy to present everything, but really happy to talk about one of the things that. College of Southern Nevada, that we potentially be starting some classes, and they'll be offering out of this library, the East Las Vegas Library Branch. So, we met with president, chief of staff, to discuss that, and then that's moving forward. And that's, we started those conversations in July, and looks like we'll probably be having some classes as early as the fall, so I'll keep you posted on that, and then as we expand throughout the library district. From the August report, I wanted to share that I had the opportunity to meet with Square, the food bank, I had heard a lot about Three Square and the food that we had been helping provide to children and families throughout the summer and throughout COVID. So, I had an opportunity to go tour their facility, which I thought was great, and we're looking at some partnerships with them to actually expand to offer senior meals to seniors throughout the year. And also collaborate with some programming around that as well. I hope that everyone had a chance to read the interview from the Las Vegas Review Journal, that actually took place August 9th, and it was in the newspaper this past weekend, I thought it turned out really well. To discuss the library district and programs and services that we're looking to offer in the future, and that was actually held here at the East Las Vegas, that interview. Where we were able to highlight specifically our multipurpose room here, our meeting rooms, podcast studios, DJ equipment, and the grand screen room. What we, as a follow-up for the Strategic Playbook 2026, on August 25th, we, the A Team and I presented the playbook 2026 to the entire district. We did a hybrid approach, we had some of the staff in person at windmill, and then we streamed the rest of the meeting. It was, it gave the staff an opportunity to learn more about the strategic playbook, hear from all the administrative team members, similar to how you did. And I'm happy to say that some of the staff, a lot of the staff have already begun to implement the Strategic Playbook 2026 in their respective areas. So, I'm able to see some of that activity and collaborate with them, and some of them are in the staff outside of the A Team or in the audience. The, one of the last things I'll share is that the collaboration with the Clark County School District is moving forward. Met with the superintendent in August, I attached the letter for you to see that I provided to him, which is a partnership between the library district and the Clark County School District. To provide eBooks directly to the school students from their, what's called their Destiny Discovery Platform. So, we will be able to integrate seamlessly, integrate their content with our content, and they'll be able to select books right from their desktop, from the library, no library card needed. This is for all school district students, I see trustee Jerome, who I had a long conversation with about this, so happy to have this in place. And this is the beginning, I hope, the beginning of some future collaborations with the library district and sharing our resources. Chair, now entertain any questions that the trustees may have.
Yeah, first of all, thank you Director Watson, always, I'm still amazed at just how much you're getting done, how quickly you're getting it done. I couldn't be happier with the results. I do want to jump to the first item on your report here, real quickly if we could, which was the, our year, fiscal year end COVID-19 pandemic fiscal response. You will probably notice this is a holdover report from our last meeting, when our CFO, Floresto Cabias, couldn't be with us for that meeting, so I'd ask this item just to be carried over again. Specifically because when you read through the financial hardship we faced and every government agency faced. As bad as it was, we, as a library district, came out of this financially rock solid and ready to move forward. And we're already looking at new branches, and the director's already hard at work at securing places to build us a new West Las Vegas, and we're looking at other Northwest areas. And to be in a position already to look at that, we have to give the credit to where it goes, and that's our CFO, Floresto, so that's the reason I asked this to be carried over, is just, I wanted to personally and publicly thank Floresto for the amount of work that he's done the last year and a half plus. To put us in this position where we're already looking at building to the future, instead of digging out of a hole, so just a thank you from me, and I would think the rest of the board would probably agree with that. And with that, are there any reports any of the trustees would like to pull up for discussion, questions, fire away.
Mr. Chair, so I just wanted to first echo and say, great job to Floresto, and it's good to have him back. And then just Director Watson, I know that we had discussed it in our briefing, but I just wanted you to really, you know, just put it on the record to discuss the two regional managers versus three, considering that was in the strategic playbook that we approved.
So, the library district did conduct interviews for regional managers. We got down to about five finalists. Out of those, we initially selected three candidates, regional managers that we made offers to. One of the three candidates decided that they would stay on with their current employer. We then decided to look at one of the other, the other, one of the other candidates, and after having conversations with that candidate, they decided that they weren't interested in the position. So, at this point, the library district, myself and library operations and the team have decided to go with two regional managers for now, and see how we're going to be able to manage with that. And if we, if we aren't able to manage, or we decide that we want to move forward, we're going to repost the position, that additional position. And again, we'll determine if it's needed, if it's needed, we'll go forward, if it's not needed, we'll look at that position in another, in another way.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any of the reports they'd like to pull up or discuss?
I do, Chair.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to discuss the library operations. Leo, will you come up here, I don't know how much you'll be able to tell us about the program, but I always like to showcase especially employees that, you know, look outside the box and kind of are creative and coming up with new programming. So, I know on your report, you mentioned the Academia Hispana, I don't know how much you can tell us about it, but I would like to know a little bit more about it, and how these students or community people can apply for.
Thank you, Leo Segura, library operations for the record. Alex Acosta de Leon, the Built From Scratch director here, he's the one that kind of dreamed up this project, and worked with the acting branch manager, Tom Olson, to implement the academy here at East Las Vegas. It's a class to teach some of what Alex has spent his career doing, which is broadcast media. And it's going to teach the community members, gets their hands on, get some experience in learning what broadcast media is, how to operate, and there are several classes, it goes through three more weeks left in the academy. We will be having a graduation here at the end of that time period, and we did account for some flexibility in the programming to allow students to miss up to two classes and still complete to graduation. We've been having full classes, eighteen to twenty-five, and we did have a waiting list, so we'll most likely be bringing the academia back to East Las Vegas.
Perfect, thank you, please applaud Alex, I just love when employees kind of bring out their own ideas and put them into fruition, so thank you.
Definitely will, thank you.
Trustee Melendez, I think I heard you say you had a comment or a report you wanted to discuss.
No, I just wanted to say, thank you Chair, but I wanted to just say, I read the RJ article that Calvin did, and that was just outstanding, telling the story and talking about all the different initiatives and things that, especially surviving this pandemic, so I just wanted to say that was a great piece of media for the library.
Did we calculate the value on that piece? That had to be an expensive one.
Front page?
Does anybody else have any reports they'd like to pull up?
I do, sorry, I'm just going through my notes, because I'm so nerdy, that's okay. I think also just, Leo, you don't need to come back up, but I just want to thank you for adding 2019 statistics, I know I asked about that before, so I could try to get a baseline on how we were doing, so I really appreciate that, you took the time to do that. I had a couple of questions for Betsy and Matt, potentially both of you, it's just about Summer Challenge, I'm curious if we've ever done any analysis of that, I see all the great social posts and content that came from it, but I'm curious how results, what were results, and how do they compare?
Good evening trustees, Chair Wilson, Councilwoman, Executive Director Watson, Betsy Ward, Branding and Marketing Director for the record. Thank you for that very timely question, trustee Turner Watley. So, there is a brand-new benchmark that Matt will talk about in a minute, that will be starting as of this year, so I'll let him address that. But for branding and marketing, our benchmarks are really about touchpoints with consumers and the engagement that we can measure from our website and social media channels. So, the very first touchpoint, sorry for the mask, but just to be safe, the very first touchpoint was our Summer Challenge brochure. We printed one hundred and fifty-eight thousand brochures this year, that's probably double and more than we've ever done before. One hundred and ten thousand were distributed by CCSD to their students, the remaining brochures were distributed throughout the library district and by community outreach. We invested more deeply in advertising and direct mail this year than ever before. Our print advertising campaign ran in the RJ, Las Vegas Weekly, Black Image Magazine, El Tiempo, and the Summer Challenge brochures were polybagged with May-June issue of Desert Companion, which goes out to eighteen thousand people. Our direct mail campaign went out on June 15th, and we sent out a bilingual postcard mailer, which promoted Summer Challenge and the new Las Vegas Lights library card. They went out to one hundred and sixteen thousand and six hundred business and residential zip codes in the neighborhoods surrounding West Las Vegas, East Las Vegas, Clark County, and Sunrise. Our digital advertising campaign included Facebook and Instagram, which was promoted further through our Google grant, plus, we did a series of digital ads in the RJ. And Summer Challenge was a major feature in our twice-monthly highlights newsletter, beginning in May, for a total of six inclusions, that went to three hundred and sixteen thousand library cardholders each time, for an average open rate of twenty-one percent, which is very high. Our Summer Challenge landing page on lbccld.org included a short animated video of our popular characters, the little robot and his little robot dog, which drew repeat viewings over and over, we were very surprised and glad about that. Updated audience portals for four audience groups included parents, kids, teens, and Espanol, which spotlighted new events, online resources, and curated staff lists. We received seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-four unique visits to this landing page, and this was during the period of May 1st through July 31st. The library district received strong social media support from our 2021 partners, including CCSD, CCSD Faces, and the Las Vegas Lights FC. This helped to increase the total reach of our dedicated social media posts, and these posts pushed our messaging further to newer audiences than we could have done without these partnerships. This demonstrates the power of partnering with true influencers who are active on their own social media channels, and it is something that we intend to expand for Summer Challenge 2022. And Executive Director Watson has created what he calls after-action reports, which will be assigned to all teams who collaborate on major library district initiatives, to conduct follow-up examinations on these projects. And then to report back our results and recommended changes, so this will be an opportunity for these teams to meet together, hash through what worked, maybe what didn't work, new ideas, brainstorm, and move that forward to the next. This report on Summer Challenge will be shared with the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any, I'm mostly curious about how, what were numbers like, I know this is such a big push for us, so maybe Matt can answer that, like, are those efforts working, I guess is what I'm asking, and what's working, and how can we do more of that next year?
Good evening, Chair Wilson, Board of Trustees, Director Watson, for the record, Matt McNally, Community Engagement Director. The short answer to your question is yes, it was extremely successful, in fact, in my time at the district, I believe that this was the very most successful Summer Challenge program that we've actually ever had. You know, as Ms. Ward alluded, on August 27th, staff engaged in an after-action review, and we're now generating a written report for the director. And we had that opportunity to discuss various outputs, and more importantly, various outcomes that maybe came from the Summer Challenge program. So, just by the numbers, children in K through twelve read for over three point four million minutes throughout the summer, which is pretty impressive. Parents and children ages zero to five read over thirty-six thousand books together, or young ones by themselves, and in total, we had almost seven thousand participants. Comparing to 2020, it's a fifteen percent increase. Now, we know that obviously times were very different even a year ago, so using that as a comparison is somewhat difficult. And one of the things that's happened with the program is that the program has evolved over the last two years, where we've really been designing the program now, not so much as just a reading initiative, but it is a reading and learning initiative. We recognize that children, they learn and they experience things in all sorts of different ways, and so we want to find ways in which to be able to engage children differently. So, prior to that, prior to that two years ago, the way that statistics would often be counted is different than the way that we're counting now. So, we really look at this year as being our benchmark year, where we're going to be able to compare, you know, back in future years. The way that it was counted differently is we used to count a participant as someone who would pick up a marketing flyer, and then someone who completed the program, we would count that as a completion. That's not really what our staff is aiming for, we really want to see, well, who actually really participated in the program. So, if we were to compare numbers from before to the numbers that we're doing now, you know, Betsy said we printed, I think, the hundred and fifty-some thousand brochures, well, a comparison was before, we had thirty to thirty-five thousand. So, we're four to five times more active, I think now, if you were to use those comparison numbers. But what we're really looking for are participants in the program, and we now count that as someone who actually completes level one of the Summer Challenge program. So, they have to pick up the brochure, or they have to participate, and they have to get to a point where they've completed level one, where they get that first reward of a book from the library district. So, we look at that now as being the participant involvement level, and then we look at completion as someone who completes all three levels. And then one of the interesting things that we added on this year, which is a great accomplishment, was we introduced the Super Reader Challenge. And so, this is for children and families who want to go above and beyond, and really take their reading to the next level, where they're consistently reading for thirty minutes every day throughout the entire summer. So, the after-action report will also capture other things like best accomplishments, and also things that we want to improve, things that we want to stop. So, we had a great discussion, I think everybody left it saying, wow, that was, as staff members, that was really healthy, and it was very constructive, and so we look forward now to, staff is actually in the process of drafting that written memo for Director Watson.
Thank you so much for the insight, and congratulations everyone on a great work around Summer Challenge, it's out everywhere.
Thank you.
Can I just, Matt, really quick, wanted to thank you for including those upcoming events in your report, and I'm looking forward to hopefully be able to make to a couple of them, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much, we thought that was important, and we really want to let you know, like, some of the coolest things that we're doing out there as a library district, so as Chair, you know, as Board of Trustees, and if you can help promote those and attend and be there and support those, we really appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a great report, I was really excited to see the Bibliaboard stuff too, if anyone hasn't had a chance to take a look or listen, I guess, to our local musicians, it's really interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Turner Watley, is that everything you had?
Yes.
Anyone else? I'll accept the, entertain a motion, do we need a motion to accept the reports, or we just accept? Okay, well, then I will go ahead and accept the directors' reports. To, let's see, item seven, we have no unfinished business, so on to item eight, new business.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull eight A two.
Eight A two, days of closing for the calendar year?
Yep.
Okay, that has been pulled, does anybody else have anything else they would like to pull?
Chair?
Yes.
If we may pull item four A, please.
Items two and four?
I think we need to pull one as well, there's.
A, so we got items A, one, two, and four have been pulled, leaving items three and five on the consent agenda. If everybody else is good with that, I will accept the motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
So, move, Chair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on, let's start with item A one, discussion and possible board action to retract approval for the library district's closure on October 11th.
I mentioned this to Calvin earlier, but they says town halls are going to be occurring biannually, I believe it's meant to be semi-annually, and just, since we're making a motion, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Mr. Chair, with that, that statement, I'll move to retract approval of October 11th, 2021, as a closed date for the library district.
Motion by trustee Wa, second?
I will go ahead and second that.
Second by Vice Chair Beneditas, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, and then item two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to pull this one to just highlight that I'm excited that the library district, you know, in accordance with the recent actions of Congress, will be celebrating Juneteenth to highlight important history in our country. And I just wanted to make sure that as we approve this, that we just kind of shine a light on kind of how momentous this was for us. So with that, I'll move to approve the proposed days of closing for calendar year twenty twenty-two, and approve Juneteenth as a replacement holiday for Staff Day.
Second.
Second by Trustee Raymaker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Last of all, we have, what is it?
Four.
Four, yes. So discussion and possible board action regarding a contract award with KME Architects for Architectural Consulting Services for the Development of a Building Program for Possible Relocation of West Las Vegas Library.
Thank you, and the reason I just asked to bring this up, just because there is a price tag attached to it, so I just felt we needed to have just something on the record since we are...
I'll read the background again, as we mentioned. This is in reference to potential relocation of the West Las Vegas Library. Building program is required for the possible construction of a new West Las Vegas library. Program will build on the success of East Las Vegas library program and the district's strategy to design twenty-first century libraries. The program will guide the library in its implementation of updated new library services and will help to ensure that these services and programs are relevant to the West Las Vegas community. The consultant will lead the district through an in-depth programming and community engagement process that involves a series of informative stakeholder focus groups sessions that will include active community members and organizations, political representatives, as well as district trustees and staff. Consultant services include conducting a needs assessment, encompassing input and data gathering and analysis of branch collections, staffing, seating, technology, and community meeting space requirements. Building program will break down all assignable space in the proposed branch and includes a matrix of common and optional physical elements, facility requirements, and adaptability requirements for future needs. The full scope of the work and deliverals are outlined below. KME Architecture is a full-service architectural firm and was selected by the board as the architect of record for the West Las Vegas library as part of our master plan selection process. KME is a certified minority business enterprise as well as a disadvantaged business enterprise. KME has extensive knowledge of the West Las Vegas community, having successfully led the community engagement process when they were selected by the City of Las Vegas to lead the master planned building commission of the oldest remaining elementary school in Las Vegas, the historic West Side Library. Our recommended action is staff is requesting authorization to award a contract to KME Architects not to exceed seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars plus authorized reimbursable expenses for library building consultant services to develop the building program for a new West Las Vegas library, subject to final review by council.
Thank you. Is there a timeline?
We expect four months. The contract gives them six.
Thank you. That answers my questions, Chair. Thank you.
I do have one quick comment on this, not this item specifically. Chair, former Chair Ortiz started a practice of with these contracts, also just including in the record the ownership principles of the company, just so we have that listed for public information.
Melvin Green is the principal of KME.
So I just noticed it was missing in this one. I know we have it from, but just it makes it easy for the public when it's in there. If we could just continue that practice, I would appreciate it. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
Chair, I'll move to authorize staff to award a contract to KME Architects not to exceed seventy-six thousand two hundred and three dollars plus authorized reimbursable expenses for library building consultant services to develop the building programs for new West Las Vegas library, subject to final review by council.
I'll second that, Chair.
Motion by Treasurer Wa, second by Vice Chair Beneditas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You.
Thank you. And moving on to item eight B. This was an item I had asked for, and actually, this was an idea from Trustee Rogers that I thought was a great idea. We, as a board, do annual reviews of the executive director, and it's kind of our job to oversee our one employee. It'd come up in discussion that, hey, if we wait till an annual review, at that point in time, it's kind of late to get a handle on what's going on, and it might be a good idea to just do a check-in during the middle of the year. And if, you know, holes have already been hit at that point, we can find new ones if they're falling behind or needs to refocus. It's a chance to get ahead of it before we get to having to wait a whole year to make adjustments, and then a whole nother year to see what happens. After discussion with Director Watson, he agreed it was a good idea. Our Council Wilt felt, agreed with this system. The idea was that the executive committee would meet as a subcommittee and just have a more informal discussion with Director Watson and report back to the board as a whole with where we are at that point, where we've been, to be used in the actual annual review when we do the formal review process. So my goal here would be, starting next month, we're kind of a month behind the halfway point, but close enough, for the four-member executive committee to sit down informally with Director Watson and kind of have this check-in to see how we're going, the progress she's made, what things we have to work on for the next half of the year. That is the idea. Any questions, comments, discussions at this point?
Question, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, will there be some mechanism placed for trustees who aren't on the executive committee to, for thoughts, maybe just to you, to be shared in these sessions, or just kind of be a check-in?
It's kind of more of a check-in because it's informal. We can't, you know, do anything with raises or rewriting the ship without the whole board as a whole. But it's more of a way for the committee to go, hey, there's a problem. We do need to bring up to the board as a whole, or add to the next agenda item if there is an issue, or, you know, if there's certain specific things that you wanted attention to, you know, I would encourage the board to email them in to me or call me on it, and, you know, any of the members of the executive committee, and we can bring that up. But I'd like to avoid turning this little, the small check-in into a big group, long-winded, never-ending discussion. That's what the, kind of, the annual review's for. This is sort of just a quickie check-in midpoint thing. But again, I'm here and open to feedback. I'm one person, one vote, so please, any suggestions to make it better?
I think my question would be, why have these and then hold them from the rest of the board for a year? That, to me, feels like the rest of the board doesn't understand or have visibility into the direction or the goals that you may be setting or setting throughout the year.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Are you saying why have the meeting and then hide and hold it back from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I mean, the way this is written, it says that summary, reports summaries of the meetings will go to the general board at the annual review.
We can change the wording of that to have it sent to the board and just provided to the board in the chair's report the following meeting.
I think that'd be helpful. I would just be curious if you're going to change goals or what the goals are, like that we all have some visibility into that rather than waiting.
Well, no, the spirit of this is, is if there's something to change, it's so that this informal meeting brings it to surface, so we can bring it to the board as a whole to actually change those goals. So if there's a better way to clarify this, I am completely on board with that. You know, if everything's all well and good, the chair's report might be as simple as, hey, everything's on track, so we'll just wait until the annual...
Which is what I would expect, right? But however, I just don't think the way this is written expresses that. It's holding those summaries until the end of the year, and that's odd to me.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Any suggested change? Any other comments on it?
I would just comment that I believe that this is more than a critique. It also may be an opportunity for us to applaud progress.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah.
And offer assistance in new ventures, for that there are things sometimes that we have a way of connecting with, where the more traditional channels may not. So I like this idea. I like your modification as well.
Does anybody have any other further discussion on the item? And Trustee Turner Watley, do you like to make a modified motion that better suits it?
Yeah.
Give it a stab, we'll try it. We can always tweak it again if it's not quite right.
Get ready, Jerry, because I'm going to probably say this wrong, but I would move to modify this so that the summaries are shared with the entire board following the meetings, or at the, what did you say, in the...
At the, yeah, the, like, the chair's report.
At the chair's report at the next meeting, and then motion to approve that. I don't know, can I do that, do things? I don't know what I'm doing.
No, that can all be in one motion. All it is, is just that I still think we would need a written summary of those meetings to be provided to the board at the annual review, rather than, but there certainly could be, if you will, a summary of the summary in the chair's report after that meeting. But I still think they need, there needs to be some minutes kept and a written report given at the annual review. Because it is a committee, and it, so it is more formal. But there's certainly nothing wrong with adding that a summary of the, of the review will be provided in the chair's report at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So maybe something along the lines, have the executive committee regularly review the director's performance through periodically scheduled meetings, and report summaries at the next board meeting, and as well to the general board at the director's annual review. Would you like to make that motion?
That is the motion I would like to make.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Wa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, the motion carries, and we will schedule that into the October meeting for the executive committee, so. Let's see. Is this to the announcements? Let's see here. RTC launch party, or the launch, what's the right word I'm looking for here, Director Watson? The launch, not party, because nobody's partying at nine-thirty.
Launch campaign.
Thank you!
I think Caesar's partying.
Well, outside of council, nobody's partying at nine-thirty in the morning. I may not be able to attend due to a pre-planned hospital stay, not, nothing serious, just a minor procedure, back surgery, no big deal, but that might get pushed. Anyways, I please encourage all trustees to try and be there. This is a huge deal that our director knocked out of the park super fast. Barely got here, and he's already got us. What do we, the advertising value on this? I can't remember, but it was crazy. So yay, and I just hope that as many of you as possible can be there to make this launch event, and big deal, lots of free branding for us.
Can I make a comment, Chair Wilson?
You absolutely can.
I want to just thank Trustee Foote, actually, for making the introduction. And that's, you know, it was actually, that's how we started the conversation. So I wanted to just make sure that, that that's on the record, guys, Trustee Foote for introduction.
Happy to do it.
Our next meeting will be Thursday, October fourteenth, at six PM at the Enterprise Library on eighty-three ten South Las Vegas Boulevard, which does not conflict with hockey. That is the most important priority. And I did forget to say, the RTC launch event, just so it's on the record, is going to be held here, Thursday, September sixteenth, at nine-thirty AM. And last of all, the November board meeting will be held Wednesday, November tenth, at six PM at the Whitney Library. The December board meeting will be December ninth, six PM at the Windmill Library. Does anybody have any announcements from the board outside of that? And Allison, do we have any public comment? Okay, well, and hearing no public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Wow.